Frank, would you please call roll?
Sure.
Pealan? Here.
Aldus?
Blake?
Here.
Greenberg?
Here.
Rainville?
Present.
All right, and we will take a motion to approve amendment of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
If there are no changes to be presented, I move the agenda as as presented.
All right, do have a second.
I second it.
The motion, Councilmember Rainville, second by Councilmember Blake. Any discussion?
We've got a lot of reverberating. What do you think it is? Could it be your hammer by that?
Hammer? No, it's going to be something electronic. It might be.
Is it mine? Move my phone.
Liz, move this one to the other side here. Maybe it's too close to your computer. Over, yeah.
Over here.
All right, all those in favor approving the agenda as presented, please vote. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda consists of approval of city council meeting minutes from April 7th, work session, and regular city council meeting from April 14th, 2022. Approval of claims, April 15th, 2022, to May 12th, 2022. Did we get a treasures report? Is that here tonight? Yes, it is in the back.
Yes, I emailed that to everybody here.
Okay. Item C is approval of the, hang on. Approval to solicit proposals for the scheduled grass hay mowing in the three city parcels. We've had one fellow that's been doing it for a while. We've had a few others that have done it in the past. Staff wants to put that out to see if any other interested parties are there, so everybody gets a shot at it. But obviously, needs to be done when it's scheduled here. And then the fourth item is the approval of purchase of a used Toro 2011, 11-foot wide production lawnmower at a fraction of the cost of new. Appreciate the Joe and the staff of working on that together. So with that as the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve as presented?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Councilmember Rainville, motions. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Greenberg, second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Or items, we have none. So we will go to the sheriff's report. Lieutenant, you're up.
Thank you. Apologies for my tardiness. I was actually on a call just down the road there, so.
Doing service for the city of Nowland. Is that any excuse? Thank you for the service.
Yeah, thank you. Wanted to start off today by passing on, my commander wanted to pass on that he's been thinking about you guys and that he's been kind of checking in with me to make sure that you guys are doing well and that taking good care of you. So hopefully that is the case. So Commander Heath says aye and wanted me to just sort of pass on his regards as he continues to work on his new project. So hopefully, there's been no letdown, not much of one anyway, with me jumping on board, so.
He didn't tell you that he's been watching our videos?
Has he really?
I don't know.
Maybe he has, I'm not sure. He could be watching now, but he is, my regards. So just a couple notes from last month.
Excuse me, our thanks to him for his service and we think well of him still.
Absolutely.
We appreciate him thinking of us.
Yeah, I'll pass it on to you. Thank you, Mayor. Just a few notes from the month of April. We had a total of 93 calls, just one call over to the Bardon facility from last month. Nothing really of note there, a few animal calls. A few calls that were on the radar, 1-9-700 Block, Iguana Street, that's a business there. We responded to a report of some disorderly customers pushing and shoving around closing time. That did prompt a response, excuse me, a response from deputies. And by the time they got there, things were largely under control. Our deputies did some mediation on the scene. Nobody wanted to press charges. Our folks kind of just stood by as people cleared out for the night. So I only note that because that's pretty unusual for the city of Nowland. We almost never get calls of disturbances like that. So it seemed pretty minor in the long run. One call that happened on April 15th that I know the mayor had asked about. There was a police pursuit that went through the city of Nowland. Some of you may have seen that on social media. That was actually Sherburne County engaged in pursuit of a stolen vehicle. Couple different agencies from Sherburne County and Big Leg PD and those folks. We were involved as the sheriff's office to try to get in a position to do some stop sticks and some other intervention. Thankfully, the pursuit came through your city without much incident. Did garner some attention on social media though, because it was quite loud. So that suspect was apprehended by both our folks and Sherburne County folks after a pit maneuver near Barker Lake Boulevard and St. Francis Boulevard. So successful leading to that. So one other call of note, 181st and Ba Street, we did have a crash. Unique because the reports were that a single male driver of the vehicle went through the stop sign there at a high rate of speed, left the roadway, rode the vehicle. He had some significant injuries. We're not sure at this point what the rest of the story is that may have caused that crash or that's still under investigation. But not sure what may have caused him to go through the stop sign like that. So a few other updates, we're continuing to move forward with the substation with the fire department. We got some more equipment on order and we've got a plan laid out for where we're putting cars and equipment and computers and stuff. So that's good. Then I'll touch on the recent severe weather. Seems like we went straight from winter to the middle of summer in a month's time, so.
Weeks' time.
Weeks' time, absolutely, yeah. So in looking through the reports from last night, Nowland was largely spared from damage or major incidents, which we're quite thankful for. Obviously, those storms can get quite nasty quite quickly. Couple notes to keep in mind as we move towards this severe weather season. And I'm sure the fire chief might echo some of these comments. Watches and warnings come out all the time. We ask people that they please do take those seriously. A lot of times, people are guilty of seeing a tornado warning or a severe weather warning and they'll go out on their deck to look for what might be coming their way. We do, please follow the warnings that are given out with those alerts to take shelter, especially with warnings. Another thing, you can set your phones to receive those alerts. Everyone's got their phones with them these days, maybe not tuned into K-11 or the TV station, but if you got your phone in your pocket, you can get those alerts mobily. So I encourage people to check your settings and do that. And then a great resource, if you all, some of you will all have heard of this, but for the folks in the public that have not, ready.gov is a great federal website that gives you all kinds of super good information about how to prepare, how to respond to severe weather. So that's a great website to check out for folks if they have the time and inclination to get some background on what the federal folks recommend as far as what to do when I receive a warning, what is a good shelter and what is not. There's a great number of resources on that website, so. That includes my notes for today. Any questions, any follow-up on anything today?
I will say, in the last night's storms, my sister-in-law was in Champlin area and stopped into a store to get out of the weather. They herded everybody into the toilet paper aisle and said, snuggle into the shelves.
Yeah.
It's unusual, but she's, I'm now sitting amongst a bunch of toilet paper waiting for the all clear.
Yeah, boy. We, Minnesota's never boring when it comes to weather. We, it does seem like two weeks ago, we were responding to crashes with ice and snow. And last night at my home in Shisago, the wind was so strong, we actually all did go down to the basement because it was strong enough to bring some concern to our family there. But again, thankfully, we were spared. But there was a lot of damage in the metro and unfortunately, we're really early in the season for that to start happening. But it's a reality of our beautiful state. So we just encourage people to, you know, stay sky-aware as what you see on the news. And that's a great, that's a great way to put it, so people remember, check your phones and be alert about those things, so.
So let me ask you, a lot of the severe weather tends to be at night. We've had some years where it's morning storms. So starting in July, the sheriff's department will have the 12-hour shift starting at 2:00 in the afternoon. So you'd have somebody in the community at that time. Where we sit right now until July, what is the sheriff's response to the city of Nowland?
Yep.
In an emergency situation?
Absolutely. We have 24-hour coverage. You do have 24-hour emergency response right now as well. And our response can vary from a single car that is dedicated to the city, depending on the size of the incident, to, you know, 10, 12, 15 squads should the city of Nowland need them. We have comprehensive plans in place to assess damage and we work closely with our partners in the fire department. When, for example, if we have a neighborhood that's impacted with heavy damage or we have roads obstructed or potential emergency situations, the resources we can bring are pretty significant, not only our on-duty resources, fire and mutual aid partners, and calling in off-duty resources. And in reality, we assess those as we arrive. And many times, it's, it can be a home-by-home process to check on people and make sure that they're okay, depending on the extent of the damage. A process that we've both done before in the past. When we come to a neighborhood that suffers significant wind, tornado, hail, lightning damage, if the damage is structural in any of the homes, we will do, we will do home-by-home checks if necessary to check on people and assure life safety first of all. So the sheriff's office, we have a large number of resources that we can bring to your town on a pretty short notice. Fire, with their mutual aid partners as well, could do the same thing, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any questions for lieutenant? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor, counsel, just a quick few notes about the month of April. For the month of April, the fire department responded to 19 incidences on the month with an average response time of 10 minutes and 1 second, which if you'll remember from the quarterly report at the last meeting, that's down about four minutes from the first quarter total. Average number of firefighters attending calls for service was 4.4 and the fire department reports no dollar loss from fires for the month of April. There was no significant events in Nowland of note. However, Nowland did assist St. Francis on April 7th on a structure fire in the 232 block of Yucca Street. And on April 11th, they assisted with the 236 acre grass fire in the Bethel Wilderness Management, Wildlife Management Area. On April 27th, firefighters hosted a barbecue at the station as part of our monthly maintenance drill. We had a great turnout. Some even brought their families up. So it was good to see people getting together at the fire station. This is something that they hope to replicate throughout the warm months of the year as well. Chief Schmidt, Assistant Chief Schrag, and Assistant Chief Florence interviewed candidates for the captains positions, which we will talk about next with the recommendation for council appointments. And Assistant Chief Schrag continues to work on gathering information and quotes regarding a municipal well and we should have information to present to council in June on that behalf. And to echo Lieutenant Jacobson, over the past couple, over this week, we had two rounds of severe weather, Monday morning, Monday afternoon, and again last night. We did receive one call of a tree on a power line on Monday. We did have no calls for service last night due to last night's weather. However, tonight might be kind of the coup de grace, if you will. For those of you that have been through town, you can see the standing water that's around. The challenge that that creates is if we do get a significant wind event tonight with the ground being saturated, we will start to see trees start to tumble and that's where we really start to have some problems. But to Lieutenant Jacobson's point, for the most part, this area was spared. In my neighborhood in Coon Rapids where I live, we had a tornado come through last night. Thankfully, my house was spared. But again, we're really in that interesting time of year right now. Pulling in, it was 90 degrees on my squad temperature, so. And we are under a tornado watch currently for this area. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the report.
Are you happy with 4.4?
You know, it's a give and take. Certainly, our numbers in the evening, we have more responders available. Our numbers in the day are a little bit more challenging. We do want to see those numbers creep up. I think once we get these captains on board and we have some more leadership capabilities, we're going to reemphasize that recruitment, especially over the summer months with the farmer's market coming up and other city events coming up where we can actually reach out and touch some, some community stakeholders.
Okay. So the point for, that's not the effort that that last person brought in?
Correct. It's the aggregate average, correct.
Yeah, I, when we were at the fire protection council meeting, Assistant Chief Schrag mentioned how he was anxious to participate in community activities.
Yes.
And he mentioned specifically farmer's market and the opportunity to recruit, but also to build relationships. Because again, typically, when residents see the sheriff's department and the fire department, it's under adverse conditions.
Correct.
So it's always best when you have some familiar faces and you're comfortable with the uniforms when they show up in an emergency, you know who these people are. So we encourage that and certainly the opportunity to recruit some more.
It's much easier to build community in a static environment versus a dynamic environment out on the street.
So we appreciate that.
Absolutely.
All right, anything else from the council? All right, move on to the captains.
As you mentioned, counsel, we spent some time in the month of April interviewing captains. We had a total of four applicants for three positions. Each applicant interviewed for about an hour. We had a number of questions plus we put up some tactical scenarios for each candidate to walk through. I'm sorry? Yeah, at the end of the interview process, myself, Chief Schrag, and Chief Florence met, discussed candidates, both their strengths and areas for development. The three people that we're recommending for appointment tonight are Mike Nelson for operations, which will be responsible for things like fleet, maintenance, personnel issues. Mike has a very strong background in management and leadership through his work at Super Value. Mike Suki is our fire prevention and education captain. Mike Suki is a detective in the neighboring police department. He also serves as an arson investigator for the countywide fire investigation team, has a strong base in making those connections through his law enforcement work with community engagement. And Justin Petrick for training captain, who's a paramedic, hazmat specialist, or I'm sorry, hazmat technician, and has worked with the specialized rescue team within the county as well. And he also does have a background in education. So that's the recommendation before you tonight. Each captain would get a $3 an hour raise as part of their roles and responsibilities of taking on a captain's position, which would be accounted for in the fire department's operating budget as it stands today. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor? Frank? Can you, Chief, can you tell me the effective date? Would that be effective?
It would be effective.
Beginning of that stay period?
As soon as we approve it tonight, we would make that effective.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
I thought there was something here that said. Oh, it's here. These appointments on the resolution, these points become effective upon submission of completed personnel action forms for each appointment to Chief, by Chief Schmidt to the administration. Which we can do quickly. I just want to make sure the file is complete.
Sure. And you'll have to let me know what that entails.
Sure. Just outline.
Yep.
Was it Councilmember Rainville that was?
Yes. I would move that we approve Resolution 2022 with the number to be assigned, authorizing the appointments of Mike Nelson, Mike Suki, and Justin Petrick to captain positions as specified in the background and supplemental information on the RCA.
Second.
And motion by Councilmember Rainville and second by Councilmember Greenberg. And just for clarification, it's Suki and Petrick. Any comments, questions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the appointments as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the hard work and congratulations to Mike, Mike, and Justin from the council. And we look forward to hearing great things.
It'll be a great addition to our leadership staff. We're very excited. Thank you very much.
All right. And you gentlemen, if you would like to depart for the evening, we appreciate you coming and your reports. Thank you very much.
I get to go to a band concert for elementary kids.
Hope that's the loudest noise you hear tonight.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to planning and zoning.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, I'm proposing, since the Drydens are not present and they never got back from me regarding their comments on the development agreement and the final findings for item B that we tabled this one more month. She had said that the plat was interim review at the county and I said that that didn't matter. The city could still approve it on this matter. But anyway, we never connected, so I'm sorry that it got on here, but I really thought it was going to happen.
All right, I did have a question since there'll be a recommendation here to table. But on the CUP for the extended home occupation, on page three of the findings, item four, there's a blank there on the piles of dirt, sand, rock, concrete in excess of, that will need to be filled in.
Right.
And then item 12, there's a decision on screening.
Well, screening is required under the city code if your outdoor storage is closer than 100 feet to the property line, which it is and has been. I mean, there's a huge distance to the north where there is no home or anything and there's natural vegetation, but you know, it's.
But on the east side there is where you're talking about the screening?
No, that's the north side. The east side is land that they own, so that's not a concern. So.
Oh, I'm sorry. I must have just turned around here. Looking at the site plan.
Oh, okay.
So that's, top of the page is north?
Yeah, that top of the page is north where that dark flag of mine is.
Yeah.
That's the question on screening, I'm saying.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I missed what Ms. Stockman said. On this drawing, is north at the top?
Yeah, that black line is north.
Okay.
But isn't the driveway coming in here?
It comes from the, it comes from the west, but then it curves down around the wetland there and then comes kind of up.
I thought that was coming off of 22, so I thought 22 was here.
No, 22 is north, but there's another property in between there, between 22 and the north side of their lot there. So that black line is the north.
All right, so has that screening been discussed with the Drydens?
No, and the screening hasn't really been discussed with you either. So they are, appear to be over the line in a couple cases with some of their items. We like things to be a minimum of at least five feet back, so I'm wondering. Yeah, I would suggest to him that, you know, he install a fence or if we could trigger installation of a fence if there's any action on that parcel that's adjacent. We could make something like that a condition. It's about, I think, 350 feet, so it's not a huge distance, but that would be the easiest. Otherwise, if we were looking at trees that had to be on the site, then he would have to move his items, you know, further south.
And that, is that somebody else's property?
Yes.
So it's not family property?
No.
Well, my recommendation, you know, if we decide to table this, is we get item four cleared up as to a recommendation on what the amount of storage would be so that we could make sure that's filled in and then make sure there's a discussion with the Drydens as to the screening so that we can resolve that as a council as well. Anybody else have anything that they would want the planner to make sure they discussed before this came back before us?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg.
So are we tabling A and B or just B?
A and B.
A and B. Anybody else, the planner Stockman?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Blake.
How long have we been dealing with this issue?
Well, it started back in October, well, actually, last summer. But we've been waiting on that transfer from the house next door, had to give the 33 feet for that future road. And then, you know, then they just finally got the final flat like last month.
Okay.
Yeah.
How are we on the 60-day on this?
We've got the unlimited extension from them, yeah, so we're okay there.
All right. So, with that recommendation from the planner, a couple of open questions that we're not able to address tonight, I accept a motion from the council.
Make a motion to table items A and B until next month on the Dryden makers and the CUP tied to the Dryden maker plot.
I second that.
A motion for Councilmember Alder, second for Councilmember Blake, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Item C.
Countryview Acres.
Countryview Acres, we have our two applicants here. They are in agreement with all the documentation and one change to a condition in the findings, so tonight we'd be approving the preliminary plat for Countryview Acres second edition, along with the lot width variance for lots one and two, and vacation of the old dwelling, drainage and utility easement for, which was over lots five and six. Just as a side note, if you, when this went to public hearing, the neighbor to the north, there's a little encouchment of a driveway where her driveway meets the cul-de-sac, and they planned to create another little outlot, so that that becomes part of the adjacent property, and I instructed them to just do that as part of the final plat, but that was fine, they didn't need to change the preliminary plat, so it's a...
So, as an outlot, it would be part of the neighbor's property, and they would never have to worry about...
The access, they wouldn't have to worry about, right? So, that'll, we'll have two outlots next time you see it.
All right.
It's really small, it's like .04 acres or something like that.
As long as you keep everybody happy.
Yes.
Is it good?
Yep.
All right. I'll accept a motion from council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would move to approve the preliminary plat for Countryview Acres second edition variances to allow lot widths of 202.2 and 198.4 feet on lots one and two, and the vacation of the drainage and utility easement across lots five and six of Countryview Acres first edition, subject to the conditions as outlined in the findings in fact.
Second.
I will motion by Councilmember Rainville, second by Councilmember Greenberg. I will say just make sure we capture that other outlot, so we hope, so somebody's got that in their notes. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck. All right, next item is the fin variance on a septic setback on 19934 Birchwood Lane. Vacation home in beautiful Nalthen.
Vacation home, yeah, we're very excited to be a part of the community. Yeah, they just live in the cities and they wanted something close. There's not a lot of issues here or a lot of choices. This is replacing existing septic system in the same location. For whatever reason, there was not a variance previously, and there should have been, or it was just not made part of the city records. So, we are legalizing that, and then this variance will run with the land, so next time, if they have to replace again in 25 or 30 years, they don't have to go through this again.
All right, any other questions for Liz from the council? Accept a motion then?
I motion to approve a 50-foot setback variance for a septic system at 19934 Birchwood Lane, thereby authorizing a box mount to be constructed at an OHWL setback of 100 feet, subject to the conditions as outlined in the attached findings of fact.
Second that.
A motion by Councilmember Blake, second by Councilmember Greenberg, any other comments? Questions? I'm sorry, Blake.
Second.
I'm second. Rainville? Second by Councilmember Rainville. Any other questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. IUP CUP compliance process. So, the general process, we had talked about, and you had given us documentation from our previous meetings. And if I'm reading this right, you would like to send preliminary letters to the yellow highlighted areas on the spreadsheet.
The yellow ones would be the easiest start, because those are assumed to be non-functioning CUPs. The blue, we are eventually going to have to send to people also that have functioning CUPs, so in other words, that still own the property for which the CUP was issued.
Well, I'd like to recommend we start with the yellows, just because those are the probable obvious ones, because it's a new owner, and they may not even know they have a CUP.
Right, that'll take some education.
And if they find out they have it, then they also will find out you have to match the conditions exactly, or it's time to get rid of it, or if you're going to utilize it, then match those conditions exactly. But at least it's, you're going to get, "I'm not using it, let's get rid of it," or, "I'd like to use it, what do I need to do," or, "I'd like to hold on to it in case I sell to somebody who could use it." I'm guessing those are the three options they would have. So, that's pretty straightforward.
Mr. Mayor, isn't there also some tax incentives if they...
Councilmember Alder.
Yes.
There, and that's in the letter that, if you take a look at the packet, that Liz would explain to them that if you got rid of the CUP, it could alter your taxes, because it would not be considered a commercial property any longer. So, that is part of the letter that Ms. Stockman would be sending out. So, are we okay as a council, starting with the ones in yellow, that because they have new owners, there is high probability the CUP isn't either being utilized or utilized as it was approved? So, are we okay, we're starting with the yellow?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I agree with that. I do have a question on the property tax status, so, so not to set people up to think, "I'm going to get a reduction." Can we phrase it, is, if you are currently being assessed as commercial, because it's very possible some of these are not, just based on things not being followed through on, through many, many, many years, so, again, just so that we're not setting up somebody to think they are going to get a reduction in their property taxes.
It says that this may serve...
But I just...
Mr. Mayor?
Planner Stockman.
Yeah, I'll be able to adjust that, because we can actually see that on the tax rules, if they're just taxed residential, or if there's a commercial or industrial component.
Okay, so you can tell them in their letter that your property is currently taxed on a commercial basis and are not using it, you may see a reduction.
Yeah, we'll educate people.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
And by the way, 12345 Nalthen Boulevard is in Ramsey.
Is that a real address?
It might be, but if it is, we start at 181st. So, the council's okay with, we start with those highlighted in yellow?
So, that's 12 properties, and then we'll see how that goes, and I'll report back next month. And just as a side note, like, there are some, for instance, destroyed bednar's who operates a cabinet, actually, he, he may, I think he moved all of his operations to town here. I think he started it under the CUP previously issued for Dale Smith.
Yeah, so he, I believe it was his uncle, or his wife's uncle.
Oh.
It was a family member, and he took the business, and it got too big for what it was, and he, so he moved it down into the commercial park here, or the industrial park. So, my understanding years ago, that there was no further cabinet business going on up in the residential area, he moved the entire operation down here, so...
So, there's, what my point was, is that there's no record of that CUP anywhere, so I'll have to talk to Rupee about, you know, we have minutes, some minutes that show that it was talked about, and, anyway, that's as far as I've gotten with it. So, anyway, some of these...
It's pretty hard to cancel that one if we don't know what it was. But you'll follow up on that one with the attorney, and see how we can handle it, because, again, that's probably an easy one to clean up, we just have to figure out legally how to do that if we don't currently have a record.
Right.
All right, so if we're agreeing that we'll go with the 12 in yellow right now, the next question will be how to do it. And right now, we have four pages. My question is, how do we make this as easy as possible for the people that are getting this, that maybe don't know they have a CUP?
My, Mr. Mayor?
Planner Stockman.
I would recommend that we put in a statement that says, you know, if you're unsure what to do or have questions, call right away, and we can assist you in explaining it, first of all, and then, secondly, it'd help in filling the form out if they need that. They probably will, I'm guessing, need a little recommendation on how to fill it out.
Okay, so, so I get this in the mail, I gotta put my name, address, obviously, we wouldn't know their email address or their phone number, but if we send this out, is it possible to, would we know enough to put their names and addresses on this?
Yeah, we could do that, and we also would fill in the part about when the permit was issued and what it was for.
Okay.
And then we would attach that CUP, so they could review it and know what we're, you know, what this is about.
And, and so, I just wanted to be clear that they need to fill in email address and phone numbers, and then they need to check one of these three boxes.
Correct.
So, it's either active and compliant to all the conditions you just sent us, or it's active, but it's not complying to all those conditions, or we want it inactivated.
Right.
And, so, there is no business operating my property, it's strictly a single-family residential land use, so it's inactive. So, at that point, so then you go into residential business arrangement, do you live on the property, you live on the property at least one or more buildings, I do not live on the property, this goes to the active portion.
Just generally, because...
Well, let me, let me back up. If we put inactive first, kind of like on the taxes, once you get to this point, if it's inactive, skip everything else here and go to this to figure out how to get it.
No, it's kind of a check, because they have to be living there in order to operate the business, so...
Right, so, but if it's inactive?
Oh, if it's inactive, yeah, but they could say it was inactive and still be running it, and try, you know what I mean, so I don't know.
Well, but, no, I'm saying, though, so let's say it's inactive.
Okay.
So, then you skip to, if it's inactive, we're going to get rid of it, because it's, if it's active, but not compliant, or active and compliant, they just keep going, it's inactive, now we're going to push them and say that we'd like to get rid of it.
Well, right, and do we, and I had a little question mark in red on the third page, if they say it's inactive, do you want me to go check that out?
Yes.
Okay.
And what I would say, if it's inactive, if the conditional, so on page two, it says, "If a conditional use permit is inactive, that is a business for which permit was approved has ceased operation, property owner may request city revoke the permit." Would we want to say, "We recommend that the property owner request the city revoke the permit?" Because if it's inactive, we got to keep monitoring it, and if it's, then otherwise, they have to prove it's compliant or...
It's not a bad idea, yeah.
So, and then, normalist processes, normally, this process is an action initiated by the individual property owner requiring application fees in a public hearing held for the council. During 2022, the city council will be accepting groups of applications at no charge to encourage residents to remove encumbrances such as inactive permits from their property records. Is the council okay with that, doing that at no charge?
Yeah.
Okay, so that statement stands. So, what I'm saying is, if they check inactive, then we move that right up below inactive. Move that paragraph up there and say, "Do you, as a property owner, wish to discuss the possibility of having the city revoke the CUP at no charge in 2022?"
I see, okay, so switch that around.
Yep. Then, if it's active and compliant, then the rest of it follows, "I live on the property, I do not live on the property," then the inspection is required, because that makes more sense, because if it's inactive, I don't want them to have to go through all the pages to say, "I only need to do this one thing." I want to be done with it.
Okay, what was the sentence you said you wanted to add if they check inactive, about kind of pushing toward the revocation?
For which permit, so the first sentence, "If conditional use permit is inactive, that is business for which permit was approved has ceased operation, property owner, the city is recommending that the property owner request a revocation of the permit." And then normally, this costs you money, we're, we got a, 2022, we'll do it at no charge.
Is that in the letter, Mr. Mayor, or is that under the inactive part you want?
It's under the inactive, so, in, on page two, where it says inactive conditional use permits?
Oh, down there, okay, but that'll be getting moved up, okay.
Right, so that whole paragraph gets moved up, so, the first checkbox is inactive, and right after that is inactive conditional use permits. We recommend getting them revoked, we'll help you do that at no charge during 2022. That encourages them to get it done. And then, that last sentence there, "Do you, as the property owner, wish to discuss the possibility of having the city of Nalthen revoke the CUP at no charge in 2022?" That gives us an out, if they wait till next year, we don't have to necessarily do it at no charge.
Okay, got it.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Frank.
Just a question more than anything else, is revocation, does that require a process?
Yes, that requires a hearing.
So, there does?
And so, we're suggesting we sort of get a group, groups together and do a few at the same time.
I see, and is that before the planning commission only, or the planning commission and city council? City council?
I think it's the city council.
Yeah, it could just be city council, we could do it either way, it just requires a hearing, but it makes sense to just bring it here.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I just, I want to get clarified, you're changing here, so, on page one, it's got permit information, issued business type, please review, please review the terms of the attached, so that inactive and everything related to inactive goes there and then down. Okay, that's, I just want to be sure.
Yeah, that does make more sense, like you said, so they don't have to go through the whole other questions, right?
Yep.
And you could say, "Please, please proceed to signature on page two."
Yep.
Okay, yep, and then we want to be, yeah, inspection required either way, so...
And then, Mr. Mayor, question?
Councilmember Rainville.
Ms. Stockman, under the names, the name, home address, the conditional use permit, business type use, you said we would do that, would that be city staff, or would that be consultant, would that be you?
Probably me. They'll have, well, I, I'll have to see how... They'll have, well, I, I'll have to see how, if the CUP is obvious, then yeah, I can just give the staff the forms and have them, yeah, fill in that info. That wouldn't be a problem.
I understand that their workload is, you know, they're, they're busy, but I, the fact that we're doing this at no charge to them, but we are still compensating you for the work that you're doing on it, if we can do some of it internally, that would be, I think, beneficial.
Um, yeah, I'll have to do sort of the background and look up to see what's what and then if I have like two versions of a letter, I'll just say these get this version and these get this version.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Frank?
Members of the council, I would recommend that she do these confirmations. I'm not terribly well-trained in planning, although I'm aware of its, its basics. Neither are the two other folks in our office. I just would hate to go through this process and then find out that we've made a small error that was just good enough to foil the effort.
All right.
We'll try to keep it economical all the way through if you don't mind.
So Liz, is there, is somebody within your staff that could help out with this at less than $60 an hour?
Sixty-six?
Six, I'm sorry, yes, your rates did go up, I apologize.
Um, yes, actually, there's some administrative staff at Hawkinson that might be able to help.
Yeah, that would be helpful because, because I know that the office staff is.
Yeah.
Is, is busy and, and as Frank says, not their expertise, we don't wanna, with these first 12, this is our trial run, let's, let's get it right. But if we could engage the administrative staff at Hawkinson at a slightly reduced price, that would be beneficial all the way around since we're not charging.
Sure.
And then, then obviously, as you say, we wanna group these together so we can have one hearing session and, and get as many done as, as we can, so.
Okay, very good.
All right, so back to page one. Liz will be responsible with administrative help to put in the names, home addresses, conditional use permit issued, business type, and then she'll realign this to start with inactive checkbox followed by inactive paragraph. And then the question, do you want to, I would probably put the question, do you as the property owner wish to discuss the possibility of having the city of now then revoke the CUP at no charge in 2022? I'd probably bold that, just to make sure they get that checkbox there. And then, then rearrange the rest of it to follow. It's active and compliant, then you will set up a time to check their compliance. If it's active, non-compliant, just so it naturally flows. Here's what you do if it's inactive. Here's what you do if it's active and you believe it's compliant, we'll just set up the date. Here's what you do if it's active and you believe it's not compliant to the conditions you just read, here's the, the process.
Okay.
And so if we just kind of flow into those three steps and then you can say, if it's active and compliant, then you're done here, except for we're gonna come out and inspect and we're gonna verify that we agree with you. If it's active and non-compliant, then here's all the steps you're gonna need to go through.
Okay, I like that.
Frank?
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, we'd like to, there's a number of changes here that you've gone through a couple of different times, different pages, different forms. I think what we'd like to do is make the changes, shoot them out to you and say, did we get them all? Because again, the last thing I wanna do is be on our merry way and find out we got two out of three right.
Yep, I agree. So is that all right, Liz?
Yeah.
You followed what we were saying?
I did.
Shoot us a, shoot us a new draft?
Yeah.
Frank sent it out to the council and if it looks like we hit on all the targets, then we proceed. If we miss something, then send the comments back to Frank only and Frank will work it out with Liz and get it straightened out.
Thank you.
If there are additional changes from the council member, we'll go through another draft and send it out to the council and once we get approval from the council, we'll move forward as, as quickly as reasonable.
All right, so.
All right? And, and, and please, council, when you get that from Frank, the faster we respond to Frank, the better Liz can move forward. All right. Anything else on that at this point, Liz?
Um, just would wanna say, I'm sure you'll, I guess I'm not sure, but you may get calls about it, so at least you're, if you have any questions yourselves, once it gets going, feel free to just give me a jingle.
The first 12 should be the most painless, right?
Yeah.
Now, they may, may be surprised they have something there and.
Well, right, they're gonna be surprised or some people have the belief that, you know, this is valuable to me to keep this. But if you're not exercising it, then we have that right to just revoke it. So, I mean, I'll have to use my code enforcement skills to kind of tippy-toe around the legality of it, you know?
I was gonna say, looking at the 12, that a lot of them is new owners. You know, the, the one is Land and Lakes Choir Boys, which is now the Bridge Church.
Easy, yeah.
That's pretty easy. Others are gonna say, yeah, I, I bought this property knowing it had a CUP and I think it's valuable. Well, you, you'll need to obviously explain, its only value is if the business that uses it matches these conditions exactly.
Exact, right.
Because short of that, you gotta go get a new one and it would be an IUP in the future, not a CUP, so. So they may think it's valuable, but as we've found with other people, it's only valuable if you're matching the business exactly.
Yeah. So nobody saw any inconsistencies on here as far as active or inactive, is my assumption that you know of at least?
I did not. Anybody else?
I did not.
Jump out?
Okay.
All right, so you've got clarity?
I do, thank you.
All right, thank you. Engineering. So we've got first item here, consider approval of a five-year capital improvement program. It's a bit of a, it applies only to the road projects. So it's not the, the complete capital plan, it doesn't have to do with equipment and buildings and stuff. But we got going on this, we wanted to at least discuss what we're doing with roads. And the first packet's fairly thick.
Yeah.
If you go to the last page of that portion, you can see the color-coded map. And that color-coded map has a legend down below, construction year, what, what we would consider doing each year, that's what this packet will tell you. So that's the 2022, right now, the only project slated for 2022 would be the, the micro-surfacing of 185th, Clifton and 187th after patching. So the patching would be done in our regular maintenance budget and the micro-surfacing would be done as, out of the regular maintenance budget as well, because this is a trial road patch and so we would not be assessing at this point.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Question I have, and, and maybe I'll wait till we are addressing the micro-surface, surfacing project RCA, but I mean, we have the, I'm assuming that we have the funds there and the, and the bread road funds to do it?
We do.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, we had, we had put nearly a million dollars away.
That's right, yeah. And then another question I have, Mr. Mayor, is this addresses our asphalt roads, our bituminous roads. Some of us live on the gravel roads and I had a brief conversation with Frank and gravel roads are problematic, but I would like to know that we are at least having discussion on those gravel roads that have consistently given the residents issues or raised concerns with the residents and those resident, those residents have raised those concerns with council, that some of that is looked at also.
Yeah, part of, part of the discussion, and we've had multiple meetings as a subcommittee. And on that committee is Planner Stockman, Engineer Nelson, Joe Glaze from the Public Works, Councilmember Alders, myself, and Frank. And as we, as we took the broad approach of what we've done is created maps showing the bituminous, showing the gravel, showing the county roads, kind of roads that have a potential for turnback to the city versus those that the county will likely always keep. Ditching, culverts, you know, so we're looking at comprehensively. What we wanna do is get started here with a black topping plan so we can communicate to the residents and really wanna do is say, look at 2023, if, we'll, we'll talk about the micro-surfacing in a second here, but 2023, if we approve this, we can start doing feasibility studies this summer and be on top of it in the fall instead of always being behind and come winter. So the real goal here is to say, this is a fluid plan, it can change as roads change, but this is at least a start saying, this is a five-year plan, the closer we come to the current year, the more solid it is. If we agree with this, then we'll start feasibility studies on 2023 projects. So we are looking at, in addition to all the roads, we're looking at capital plan for park, for buildings, for equipment, you know, the whole of the capital plan to try and put something together for a budget. So right now, bituminous became foremost because of the feasibility studies. Gravel roads takes into account not only gravel roads, but why are they problematic? Do we have good ditching? Do we have good culverts? Those types of things. Are we looking at culverts ahead of the bituminous? The other thing we discussed is if you're doing bituminous overlays next year, you don't wanna be seal coating them this year, or crack sealing this year. So we're, we're trying to have those discussions. But this was our first attempt and rather than wait till all that was done, we wanted to get this before the council now so Shane could start working on feasibility studies.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I really appreciate the effort that's been put into this, it's great. I just, again, I'm on a gravel road and I take a lot of complaints about the gravel roads. I just wanted to make sure that they were part of those discussions.
They are.
And if they have been part along with the other items, that's wonderful. Thank you.
Any other questions on the documents before you? I would accept a motion then as to how we'd like to proceed with this approval of this plan?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders?
I'll make a motion to approve the five-year capital improvement plan for 2022 to 2026 roads as described by Shane and attached in the map.
Right, we have a motion by Councilmember Alders?
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Greenberg. Any other discussion? And as noted, it says roads, but this really should say bituminous city roads. It doesn't have to be the county roads or the gravel roads at this point. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, now, originally, when we were having our discussion, the micro-surfacing was gonna be done on Jasper. Jasper's not in any shape to do that. We driven on Jasper recently, you know it's in not good shape. Again, our intention was to deal with 187th, Clifton, 185th, and Jasper, once we hit 5,000 population, so we got state aid for those roads, but with our latest census numbers, we're a long way off from that number, so we gotta do something. Micro-surfacing was not an option with, with the condition Jasper's in, so as a recommendation here, because we don't know exactly what the sub-base is on Jasper, so the recommendation is to get geotechnical exploration on that street so they can see what the base is so we know how to correct it. Shane sent out a request, you see that the one company's too busy and declined, and the other company has done work for us in the past, and they gave us a quote of eighty-nine, eighty-nine hundred and seventy dollars. You have the documents in front of you, are there questions regarding the documents? All right, seeing no questions regarding that, I would take a motion as to approval on the eighty-nine seventy to proceed with the geotechnical work.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the geotechnical exploration of Jasper Street. And should we have in there at the estimated cost of eight thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars?
Yes.
I'll second that.
And then we have a motion from Councilmember Blake, second by Councilmember Rainville. Just a note that, again, if they go shallower than that, it's a little less, if they go deeper, it's a little more, but that's, the target is eighty-nine seventy, so nine thousand dollars. Understanding that, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, so, probably should've put this in the other order, but before we can do the micro-surfacing on, on 185th, Clifton and 187th, there's some patching that needs to be done. We have to get some of that straightened out and then we'll do the micro-surfacing over that. And so Shane went out and got a quote, as you can see here, from North Valley for thirty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars to do the patching as directed by the engineer prior to micro-surfacing. And I know the, this says 185th. Frank, do you know if he's, that includes Clifton, 187th or would it?
I thought it did from our discussion.
That's what I thought, Jason, didn't you remember that? So we should, we should clarify that that's, yeah, in the resolution, that that, that's Clifton and 187th, so everything between Nowland Boulevard and Cleary, or County Five and County Sixty-Six.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I was, I had a conversation with Administrator Boils on that this morning because I thought if we're not gonna do the other two little pieces, it doesn't make sense, but on the resolution, I just, for my clarification, the third whereas, it says the city has excavated 185th Street and found that patching, is it, is that evaluated? I mean, have we actually done work out there that we've torn something up?
No.
Okay.
No, I believe, no, didn't Joe dig out there, Mr. Mayor? No?
No. I don't think we did.
Members of the council, I think it means to be evaluated.
Okay, all right, thank you, I just.
No, if you'd like, I can certainly clarify that.
Would you clarify that and then clarify that it's includes Clifton and 187th also?
Yes, got that down. And if I might just revise a resolution and send it out to you and see if that's okay, assuming it includes all of these elements.
So if you clarify that and with the understanding that whether, whether he actually excavated or evaluated, however he did, he evaluated, so that one's not critical, but the idea that we're doing Clifton, 185th also would be put with the idea that any patching needed on 185th, Clifton and 187th between Nowland Boulevard and Cleary, if that's the understanding of the proposal for thirty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars, if that's the understanding, would we proceed with a motion as long as those conditions were met? All right, so I'll entertain a motion accordingly then.
I'll make the motion to approve the patching of, let's see here, 185th and.
Clifton?
Clifton.
And 187th.
187th, with that vote provided by Shane for thirty-five thousand.
Seven sixty.
Yeah, thirty-five thousand.
All right, we have a motion that sets conditions. Understanding that motion, if the conditions change, we'll be alerted by the administrator and reevaluate.
Who's the second?
I would second that.
Second, yeah. Second from Rain, Councilmember Rainville. So, motion by Councilmember Alder, second by Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you.
Again, understanding those conditions, that it's for the entire patching as necessary between Nowland and Cleary on that road stretch of roads. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, this is being paid for by the. Mr. Mayor, this is being paid for by the council, by, I mean, by the city.
This is, this is out of our maintenance fund, yes. Yeah, so it says source of funding road patching costs paid a hundred percent using city funds, that is from the road maintenance funds of 2022 budget. All right. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, which leads us up to the last item. So once that patching is done, then the proposal that the Subcommittee on Capital Improvement has recommended is to try the micro-surfacing. Shane has talked about that to the full council previously. We've got some examples of it over in Otsego, if you want to go out and see where it's being done in other cities. We think that this will tide us over, maybe until we get state aid funds for that road, being that there's very large parcel along there, it would not be cost-effective at this point to do a major overhaul on that road. So again, the recommendation is to do the micro-surfacing all the way from Northern Boulevard to Cleary Road Sixty-Six. And this would again be out of the city maintenance budget for 2022 and would not be charged to the residents on that road. It would be our trial. We've seen success in other cities. It would be our first one to try it here. So again, the about thirty-year-old road, and we can put in before we had road standards. Held up better than Jasper, but it's a, it's a bumpy road. People have questions on paperwork that they have in front of them.
Information, Mr. Mayor?
Frank?
The resolution does, this resolution does a better job of describing that it's 185th, 187th, and Clifton, sorry. And by the way, we're trying to go to resolutions whenever we're spending money because it's better documentation in the long run. And so, I've not told you this, but if you'd like, you can make it easier on yourself. You could move the resolution as proposed and the council will know what you're talking about. Sorry about not providing that earlier. Yes, I know.
I think those are...
They were, I know.
I had a problem.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I would approve a resolution number 2022 dash whatever it ends up being, ordering plans and specifications and solicitation, soliciting quotes for the 2022 micro-surfacing project for 185th Avenue Northwest, Clifton Road, and 187th Avenue Northwest, so the three areas between Cleary and County Five.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Rainville, seconded by Councilmember Blake. And again, this resolution has a, when we first discussed this, a hundred and four was a reasonable number. Fuel costs, Batuminus costs, we have no idea where that's gonna come in. Do we want to put a cap on it or because we have the money in the budget, do we want to say we need our best shot here? How do you want to handle the variance off a hundred and four thousand?
Well, we're just approving the specifications and quotes, right?
Yeah.
So we're not approving the actual job, so...
Well, it comes in higher and adds, it comes in higher and we'll see if we want to continue with that.
Yep.
All right.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I'm wondering, because this will be a major project between those two roads. Have we talked it all about or having consideration of how are we going to inform the residents? If we choose to go forward with this, how are we going to inform those residents that this is what we're doing and why we're doing it, you know, with the thought of at some point getting the small city aid, or the small city aid from the state?
State aid?
State aid, yeah.
There has been some general discussion. Obviously, we have to inform residents that they're not being charged, then you get into, just do that micro-surfacing on my road then, because we know that from other feasibility studies. Isn't there a cheaper way of doing this without actually, from the overlay? This is, this patch and micro-surfacing is not going to last like the rest of the work we're doing on overlays and rebuilds. So we will have to construct a letter accordingly because it has to address why we're doing it this way, why we're not charging, and why this may or may not apply elsewhere in the city. We have to see how this holds up in our, with the bases we have here. So, yes, that will be something that will have to be handled once we get this information back.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Unassociated with this, but it is because we get the funds from it. The bill I've been tracking in the House and Senate, it looks like they're going to approve permanent funding for the small cities' road aid. So it's always been hit and miss, but it looks like this year they are looking to put it in there on a permanent basis.
And I will say, between the League of Minnesota Cities and the Small Cities Association, this has been one of their top priorities because of the inconsistency. We don't have the LGA that the bigger cities have, and we certainly don't have the state aid funds for roads. So it's good to see that potentially passing this year or so.
Yep.
And we have done pretty well when they occasionally have given us something in the past. There've been some nice chunks and like, not quite the hundred and four, but it will help with the patching portion of it anyways. So thank you for that update.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And when Shane was talking about this, he's looking at ordering plans and specifications. The people who do this type of work, it would probably be late in the year when this would be done if we approve it. That's why we want to get going on it so we can get on the list. Residents along those roads are calling and watching the council as to whether we're actually gonna do something on these roads. So if you do get calls on this, we have approved this portion of it. When this, these numbers come back, then the council will decide what to do with it. Again, as you saw in there, it's probably, you know, optimistically, an eight to nine year patch as opposed to the other work we're doing is ten to twenty years. All right, we have one last item, City Council, statute report on the administrator's search process.
Three.
I think that Pat has been sending out emails. Frank's been sending out emails. You should be fairly apprised of where we're at. You have an RCA in front of you. Frank, is there anything else you would like to say to bring this up to speed?
Sure, and perhaps for the public's benefit as well. Of course, the City Council has a subcommittee that it's established. They call it the Hiring Subcommittee, but that's not really true because in the case of the city administrator, it's the entire council who's, who does the work. But the Hiring Committee has done an awful lot of work getting things prepared. For example, you did solicit quotes and proposals from three different human service firms and did ultimately recommend one. That was David Drone and Associates, who you've now awarded to. David Drone's representative is Pat Melvin. Pat has had the opportunity now to interview each of you, each of the council members, for about forty-five minutes, an hour, maybe I'm off a little bit there. It varied a little bit depending, but he was very impressed with the degree of interest and desire to move forward and completeness and that sort of thing. And in addition to getting City Council input, critically important because you are the employee entity, he also got a great deal of input from staff members. And so that included contracted staff or unemployed staff as well. He was very impressed with the amount of information. So with that information, he was able to put together a number of documents, draft of documents, which you folks reviewed then at a recent work session. They included a community profile, which is really a multi-page micro-history of the community and current status and hoped-for-future status. Some people would say it's just glints. I can tell you, having been an administrator, it's one of the documents you look at because it's got the data you're looking for. Public may not care about some of that information, but we sure do because it kind of predicts what kind of city you're going to be getting into. And so the council did approve that community profile and it has been published and it is on our website, and I believe you each have copies. You also established a salary range for the position. You looked at at least twenty or thirty different cities, some big, some small, but all more or less clustered in our area and kind of talked about the pros and cons of entry level and... I should hurry up before the rain comes? Okay. You established a salary range, you approved a three-page job description, which is a very detailed document. All of these documents, by the way, are available for the public to use or to, public to view. You established a timeline, made some modifications to the timeline that DDA had originally proposed. And that is the status except to say the position was posted late last week, either Thursday or Friday, I'm not quite sure. The good news is there have been six persons who have expressed an interest. Now, I don't know if that means they've got a complete application from them. I don't know if that means they meet your minimum criteria. The important thing is you have six people who have inquired about this position. Pat tells me that what generally happens is you get existing administrators who kind of wait till the end. And that's not a suggestion that they're not interested. It's that they tend to be slow in acting because they want to, it's where they're gonna bring their family, right? So this is a big decision for them and they want to make sure they understand everything before they jump in with both feet because they don't want to be jumping out with both feet when they find out, whoops, I missed that important piece of information. So, great job, City Council. We don't know anything yet, but you certainly are off to a great start.
And our, the next responsibility for the council will be June 16th.
June 16th, did you say?
June 1/6, yep, yep.
That's zoning and planning?
No, this is a special meeting, so this is where we will get the video interviews of the candidates. So the applications for the candidates are open till May 31st, the day after Memorial Day. And at that point, they will look through the minimum requirements, see who all has applied and who qualifies for minimum, and then they will do video interviews with those personnel. And they will then provide those documents to us, resumes, cover letters, video interviews. As I said, there's five or six questions they'll ask them. They get a minute and a half to answer each question. And then that information will be sent to us and the candidates at that point will be unnamed, they'll be numbered, so candidate one through whatever we get. And then from that, we will get together as a council and say, we would like to have these people as our finalists. And then we will provide that information on June 16th and then at that point, DDA will finalize the testing, they will do the personality testing, the rest of the testing, background checks, those types of things for the finalists. So that when we have on July 11th, the finalist, July 1st, we will have the packets of the finalist. And those finalists will have their background checks, all of those things done. So we'll have a complete packet and then we will schedule interviews depending on how many finalists we select on the Monday, July 11th.
What about...
All right, we'll wrap this up.
Yeah.
All right. So if you have any other questions, feel free to contact Frank and Pat Melvin himself. He will give us updates as necessary.
We have interviews with the zoning and planning and zoning.
Twenty-third, twenty-third.
Twenty-third. Mr. Mayor, will you adjourn? I second.
We are adjourned. Eight-twenty and it's storming.
I'm gonna bail out.
Frank, go Blake. Yep.
Marvelous.
Hey, can we just leave the room set up and we'll get it, shall we? Okay. You had sent it.
Can we turn that off?
The road?